These have the adjustments on them?
Yeah.
Sweet.
Right? Wait a minute.
Are we good? Everybody good? Okay. Oh, I call this regular town council meeting to order. Madam clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
You may, Councillor Danforth, here. Councillor Dumay.
Here.
Councillor Higgins.
Present me via Zoom.
Thank you. Councillor Mackin, here. Camerador.
Here.
Councillor McGowan, here. Councillor Pelletier.
Here.
Will you all please stand and remove your hats and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We have an addition. It's Order forty-seven, two thousand twenty-four.
We'll be on to approval minutes for the February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting. So move.
Second.
Okay, so it was motion by Councillor Dumay, second by Councillor McGowan, any council discussion? Public? Down to the, back to the council, although, oh, we do this by vote because Councillor Higgins. Councillor Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councillor Mackin?
Aye.
Councillor Dumay?
Aye.
Councillor Danforth?
Aye.
Councillor McGowan?
Aye.
Councillor Pelletier?
Aye.
Chairman Dora is aye, it's unanimous. And we have a special presentation tonight. Mandy, how are you? This is Mandy, and it's Hallway, okay, of Oliver and Associates, talking about the Bates Street project. So I will give it right over to you.
Okay, thank you. Well, this is a bit of an informational, kind of formal discussion. Just to start, the project that could happen on Bates Street. The town applied for a couple of years ago through, to the DOT, through the municipal in partnership initiative, MPI program, which is a sixty percent DOT, forty percent town match program for roadway improvement. And what had originally been envisioned was a kind of a mill and fill with drainage improvements. But in looking at the condition of the roadway, really feels like it's going to need more than that. So in talking with town staff and going to the DOT and going up, looking at the site, I put together a cost estimate for the project, which I want to discuss to you because it's not cheap. And they are only going to give you a certain amount of money. So we need to kind of talk about what the best way the council would like to see this proceed. So I'm just going to explain the status and then we can chat and try to get some direction.
If you don't mind my interrupting, just to give everybody an idea, the, the beginning and end to the project as far as the length that's going to be talked about.
Yes, I will. So there are two projects that they offered to fund. The first part of it is from the intersection of Cataden Avenue and Bates Street out to the railroad overpass. So I'm going to call that part one. And then part two would be the overpass of the town line. The funding that's offered by the DOT is six hundred thousand dollars for part one and seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for part two. I've always already asked if we can intermingle them, exchange them. We can't. The town can decide which area is your priority and which one you want to do first. But you can't spend, switch the money around or spend all of it in one side. So those are the two parts. So the way that program works, the town does its own design of what it wants to do. The DOT has to see the plans and it has to comply with typical department transportation requirements. But the scope itself is up to the town. The town puts, does the engineering, puts it out to bid, does the construction administration, and then they reimburse you for your share of the work. So with a part one, and I'm going to try to talk to the numbers because it gets a little confusing. So six hundred thousand dollars for part one is their contribution, which means the town would at least have to put in four hundred thousand for a million dollar project. And then on part two, they would give you seven hundred and fifty thousand, but the town would have to put in at least five hundred thousand dollars for a one point two five million dollar project. So I'm just going to focus on part one because, at least in talking with town staff, and again, this obviously the council's got a way in for this. If your priority is apart from Cataden Ave, and if the overpass, that's in the worst condition, then I put together a cost estimate for just that section. And the cost estimate would include replacing sanitary sewer for eleven hundred feet, replacing all the drainage, and then a complete reconstruction of the project, which would mean excavation of the existing roadway, replacing it with new, new sidewalks. Which is, I know, obviously a lot of money. And we're talking about sixteen hundred linear feet, you know, three tenths of a mile. But it's a very wide area with two sidewalks. And that's basically the cost of construction these days, and that's with contingency of ten percent. So hopefully I'm overestimating, but I'd rather expect the worst than, than if we end up with costing less, then that's less. So at this point, and I don't know, Peter, and I'll put you on the spot here, if the VPI people got back to you at all about other initial programs. We've talked to the DOT about is there any other money that you can give us? Because these are exorbitant costs, the town has a lot of needs, and we do really want to spend that kind of money to do this project or not. And there are some other programs that they said the town could apply for to try to get the funds. There's also congressionally designated spending. Our senators have done a really good job of trying to bring some of that money here, but there may be other competing projects that the town wants to apply to that program for. But otherwise, I'm sort of here with the good news, bad news. You've got some money from the DOT, but we also need a lot of other money to make this project happen. One of the other options, instead of complete reconstruction, if we were able to do some geotechnical exploration and find out what's out there for existing gravels and existing amount of pavement, maybe possible to remove some of the pavement from the top by milling it and then doing a full depth reclaim, which would be a cheaper way of doing it. So that could cut the project cost, but still, we're looking at, you know, better part of two million dollars even with that reduction in scope. So that would mean the town coming up with one point four million dollars. So I know I'm just dumping a lot of information on you at this point, but it's a start of a conversation because you do have this offer of money under contract. But how do we address the project?
That's a very good question.
Or do we address the project? Is that a priority? Is that what you want to be done? And how would you want us to proceed as far as trying to get additional funds and working with Peter, Brian?
Mr. Cameron?
Certainly, Mr. Manager.
So Mandy mentioned the VPI and conversation with the, with the DOT. I had an initial discussion with my contact at the DOT who would be running that program. What VPI stands for is Village Partnership Initiative. The I is a variable. She's nodding yes, confirming. So we also discussed, we discussed the funding specific to this project and how it could offset some of the town's cost. We also discussed it, this is the same DOT contact who I have been discussing our downtown rebuild with. So, you know, he's also thinking there may be a way to do a larger scale application to it that would benefit both projects. It's been several weeks since, since I've heard from him. So, you know, I'm expecting to get an answer on that at any moment, you know? Who, who knows when that's going to come in? But, you know, they're, they're certainly understaffed at the, at this moment, too. But there is an, there is an opportunity to get some funding through that program, either specific to the Bates Street project or as a larger scale project that would include the downtown reconstruction for the road and sidewalk as well.
Yeah, it's a relatively new program, the Village Partnership Initiative to the, they've started it in two thousand twenty-two. And it's kind of strange the way that they've set it up and because they've got either huge projects that are complete downtown corridor replacement that are several million dollars that the DOT takes charge of, or they have small projects that are less than a half a million dollars, which I know that's all still a lot of money. But, I mean, they, they only would reimburse you three hundred thousand dollars. And if that's what this kind of project was, that's not really helping us enough, I think, to make this sound like it's a, a good project.
Well, we have to keep in mind that the, you know, the original offer for this funding was three, four years ago, right? It was.
It, it was, and it was for a lesser scope. And then, just not to complicate things further, but on part two, there's a bridge that they're going to be replacing. And part of the thought process when I was talking with staff and there's been some transition at DOT, they have a new region person that's, that's coming towards. So the person we met with last fall is gone, but what it was talking about at that time, maybe it made more sense to do that second phase of work after they did their bridge work, because why would we go in there and build a new road and then have a construction project in the middle of it? But the timing of this program, we need to spend this money in three years. They aren't going to do that now until two thousand twenty-eight, what I'm being told. So it doesn't really align.
So we have, as far as spending the project down, we have until two thousand twenty-eight?
You have till two thousand twenty-seven, everything was signed in January twenty-four, so you have till January twenty. I'm sure that there's ways to get extensions, but that, that was, the answer I was getting was, because I was thinking, well, you're going to do some of this project yourselves, then we don't have to plan for that, we can plan outside of it. We certainly wouldn't want to have any work get damaged by their construction, but.
I know this is going to come up as a question.
Yeah.
But the work that, if all this work was done, is this going to help to try to alleviate our flooding that happens on the underpass every spring and every fall or any heavy rain when that underpass floods out? And we've got people that are going all the way around to the Golden Road to come down into town and that to get their kids to school.
Drainage improvements were, as part of the scope, that was the kind of the basis. This started, you know, when Ralph was still there, and that was one of the, was drainage. So, yes, we would be addressing drain.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mandy?
I did, so this is, this is kind of a one-on-one to the council. We do have to, in the not-so-distant future, get some direction on, you know, project costs and where they come from, whether we bond it, whether we apply for other grant funding. I see Brian's on, Public Works Director, he's got his hand up. I don't know when the deadline is to, to have a decision and to have funding in place, but.
I don't know, there's a, there's not a firm deadline per se. I mean, you, you have the money, it's allocated to the town, and I don't think that's going to change. But at some point in time, we will need some direction. But should we go out there and try to explore whether we could do some cheaper options and not do a full reconstruction? And that's going to take some time to go out there and basically have somebody bore through the road, see what we have for pavement, what's under it. I'm told there's not concrete under there, that it's just pavement and gravel. It, it's not, you know, considering our main winters, it's not full of it. And there's lots of trenches, there's damage, old, but it hasn't moved a lot. So maybe there's good gravel that we can use, having to take it all out and replace it. But I don't know that until somebody does the exploration. So we could do some preliminary study of that and kind of come back with something that's cheaper. But it's still going to be the better part of two million dollars. I looked at what, if I rolled back my cost estimate, we're not replacing the gravel. So maybe we're, we're cutting the cost twenty-five percent, but it's still two million, that's two hundred.
Right.
And then time's passing, five percent a year escalation for cost.
So what I'd like to do is, you know, have, have you obviously listened to this discussion tonight? And then I'd ask that you kind of chew it over and, and, and we can talk more individually about it over the next couple of weeks. And maybe at the, the next meeting or, or one shortly after, we could, we could address and kind of more formalize a plan.
Get a, kind of get a game plan together, yeah. Brian, uh, let's see, Brian Dupree, Brian, go ahead.
Hi, guys, Brian Dupree, Public Works Director. I just wanted to comment on the drainage, about the, about the underpass flooding. I don't think this is going to do much for that, for that situation. The biggest cause of that is the stream level that we don't have control over as far as Millinocket Stream.
Okay.
The, the drainage she's referring to is the, the storm drains running along the street that are pretty rotten. We've got some that have caved in that we've patched here and there, but it's the steel, the culverts that are under the street that she's talking about from Cataden Ave down to the underpass.
Yep.
I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood where the flooding was because, yes, from the underpass, we would not be doing this type of work. All right.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? I, I personally think the manager is right. I think we need to have a conversation to see, this is, this is a lot of money to commit to. And obviously, we have a timeframe that we need to do something or talk about something fairly soon. So I would suggest everybody either reaching out to the manager or manager reaching out to the funding sources and see if we can come up with quickly and see if we can come up with a game plan of how we want to approach this and how much we want to do. It's, it's a project that needs to be done. I mean, there's no doubt about it, this project that needs to be done. As it stands right now, it looks so we're talking probably somewhere close to three and a half, four million dollars of bond. Okay? So it's a, it's a substantial investment. But again, it's, it's a project that needs to be done, it's just to what level and how much we want to get involved in this. So we'll talk, you know, we'll get together, put our heads together, see what we want to do. I'll have manager reach out to you and we'll see what we can come up with.
All right, and I'll work with you on whatever we can do for funding applications as opportunities. On a completely different subject than some in front of you folks, on the culvert replacement at Smith Brook, that's where the road is closed right now, Iron Bridge Road, where the culvert has been made finally.
Yay.
It's in, it's in American concrete. Obviously, the contractor can't do the work right now until the flows go down, but he's under contract and waiting for the right conditions. We'll get up here and get that installed.
Wonderful.
Because of the grant that you have, though, we are going to have to process an invoice sometime between now and April just so that we can gather that reimbursement. So I'll, I'll work with you.
That's good news, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving along. And I've got down manager's report.
I don't have a manager's report this evening.
But I can figure.
The, you know, week turn directives when, let me say, I don't have a formal written and submitted manager's report this week. The work week, the projected work week changed direction on, on Sunday when the former bank building, other neighboring property caught fire and, and burnt. So much of my week was spent dealing with, with that, but the insurance folks and the adjusters and field adjusters and, and that sort of thing. There, there was some damage to our building throughout the process. We lost all the windows on that facing side of the building. There was some smoke damage within the building. You know, the, the water from the fire hoses ended up in the elevator well and then some pump quit. So, you know, we, you know, we're going to have to get the, the air handler on the roof cleaned and, and serviced. Our heat pumps cleaned and serviced and, you know, quite possibly carpets replaced from saturation. And so we, we've spent quite a bit of time this week dealing with that. I do want to say that throughout that process, Rick Lacks has been, you know, really helpful. He jumped in, called me first thing Monday morning and, and came right over and wanted to help in any way that he could. Try to figure out the window situation and how to do things safely, remove broken glass, that sort of thing on the way through. Speed's insurance across the street was, you know, by the time I walked in Monday morning, they already had the claim submitted and, and had a, had an adjuster ready to reach out to me. Things have been great. It is a, you know, it is a huge loss to our downtown. We certainly feel for the owner of that property. We, it, it is unfortunate that that property had just been assessed through a brownfields program. And we had high hopes for the rest of that process and the redevelopment of that, that property. It, it certainly would have been great to keep that iconic structure down here and see it turned into a new thriving business. But there's certainly opportunity in an empty lot as well. It's, it's, it's certainly a, an ideal lot that could be turned into anything with, 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 without the thought of a parking lot in mind. You know, it, it can be, it can be marketed and promoted as a, as a buildable space. And, you know, it's, we, we're still hopeful that, that we can work together and produce something viable on that, on that property. I do want to give some special mention to Chief Cody and the Millinocket Fire Department jumping to action and, and really running an incredible scene over there. Chief, you know, very easily, this building could have been up in flames and, and that could have been a lot worse. But, you know, Millinocket Fire Department, East Millinocket Fire Department, Medway Fire, Mattawamkeg, am I missing any? Howland, Lincoln and Brownville, we're all here with Chief Cody running the show. And it went off immaculately. There were, well, I say immaculately, there were two minor injuries sustained with, with two firefighters, one from Millinocket, one from Mattawamkeg that went to get checked out at the hospital, but nothing serious and no longstanding injuries from that. It is unfortunate that we needed to use them in that case, but they did an incredible job. And we're very, very grateful to have them here in the community. And on top of that, you know, we were able to call on the Public Works Department quickly. And they were down at, with the permission of the Fire Marshal, cleaning up the alleyway and, and getting the street clean, the sidewalk cleaned off. There was an issue with the well or the drainage in the, in the back parking lot sewer system that they were able to come in and dig out and fix and, and repair for us. So they certainly jumped in and did some, some stuff outside of their normal scope. We appreciate that a lot as well. On top of that, we, you know, we've been spending a lot of our time working on the FY twenty-five budget. That is, that work is happening in full force. We expect to start at workshops, I believe, the end of this month and then in through April. So get ready for that action, those meetings were some special, you know, special hearings, there we are. So that, that'll be great. We are, you know, cost of things is expensive. And, and we have, we have two union contracts that are up this year that, that are in the negotiation stages. So I, I, I don't have a crystal ball, I can't predict where those are going. But, you know, I, I think that we will be able to make as intelligent and creative use of our main revenue sharing and our unassigned funds that are remaining to keep this as, to, to keep spending as responsible as we can. You know, I, I don't want the increases that are necessary to really affect those in the community too much. You know, but we, we still are dealing with an incredible amount of neglect and, and, you know, necessary repairs and things that have been put off far too long that, that need to be addressed. So looking forward to getting into those discussions with you. If you have any other questions about anything that's been happening, feel free to ask them. Thank you.
And I echo all the sentiments that you said, the former bank building burning down is kind of a loss downtown area. Thank you, chief, and your crew and all the surrounding towns that helped provide assistance. My question is probably the million dollar question and the elephant that is in the town that have been asked me. So I'm going to politely, if the manager or if Brexit, code enforcement, um, to answer. Has the, has communication been with the property owner and what's our plan going forward? Another blighted area on the downtown area, especially with all of the plans going on with the eclipse happening in the, all the activities that we have going on. And I don't mean to put anybody on the spot by all means, but if one or both of you could shed some light as to what the plan going forward is with property owner, towns' plans, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Well, I don't mind. There has been some line of communication between town staff and the property owner. Several of us. I believe they are due to be visiting Millinocket in the very near future. If they don't be properly within that timeframe, it will come to the town council as a dangerous property to be further acted upon. I cover that all right, Tom? All right.
Fire chief. Right now, the building has been turned back over to the property owner. The Fire Marshal's office is continuing to keep it as part of their investigation. So it shouldn't be too much longer, but right now, it hasn't been released back to the order.
Bomb has to say another.
Yes, the sound keeps cutting in and out. Just so you guys are aware, if anyone on Zoom or listening, they're only getting half of it.
I don't know if this is something you could share, but I'm going to ask it anyway because I'm going to have people ask me. Was there, because previously, this owner of this building had another building that obviously had problems and collapsed on Main Street with no insurance. Was there insurance on this building to your knowledge?
I, I don't feel I should speak to that.
Okay. I'm just, like I say, it seems to be the number one question coming up for a lot of people. So I thought I would address it and so I know. Okay. All right. Anybody else have anything for the manager or, yes, Sandra?
Danny Sullivan, one oh four Sunset Drive. Just so I have it straight in my mind. Mr. Town Manager, the way you put it, then this is going to be like it is right now? When all these forty thousand people come in for the eclipse?
Unless the property owner shows up with a construction crew and a demolition crew to clean that up between now and then. That's, you know, it's a private property and it'll, you know, that's, that's why we're trying to act as fast as we can, but we can't go faster than thirty days.
And can anything be put around it by the towns? Because I would think the people in town would view it as a great danger and a great liability to anyone coming into town. and a great liability to anyone coming into town.
I would agree, uh, but it would be private property.
And so the town can do nothing.
You know, just be like us showing up at your house and building walls around it. We, you know, we can't do that either.
Anybody else? Seeing none? Yes, certainly.
On Malcolm seventy-three School Street, former fire chief. I want to thank the Milonock Fire Department for an excellent job. And all the surrounding towns that came in. We very well could have lost this building. Well. But I also want to thank the town council. You know, fire department is only as good as the council they have behind them. And your dedication to getting that fire department back to an eight man staff plus the chief made a world of difference. Things like that is where it actually shows. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Let's move on the agenda here. Council to May, can I get you to read order number thirty-seven dash twenty-two-four, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, order number thirty-seven dash twenty-two-four, providing for execution of town warrant for March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. It is ordered that the town warrant for March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four and the amount of one hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars, thirteen and ninety-five cents is hereby approved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Council to May, second by Council Higgins, Council to May, any big hitters on this one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna go with everything over three thousand dollars. So thirty-four sixty-five seventy cents goes to Dead River. That's for heating fuel. Nine thousand four, six dollars and forty-two cents goes to Dizart Service. That's for gas and oil. Nine thousand eighty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents to Elon Financial Services. That's for the employee credit cards. Uh, eight thousand two hundred fourteen dollars and eighty cents for Freightliner of Vane. That is for maintenance and repair. Three thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty-one cents goes to Main Technology Group. That's for our computers at the town office. Forty-one thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents goes to the main water company. That's for the hydrant rentals. Thirty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars goes to Milonock Memorial Library. That's per the contract. A fourteen thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-six cents goes to municipal waste solutions. That's for fill costs. Eleven thousand three hundred dollars for Pine State Electric. That's for the EV chargers. Five thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars and forty-one cents is for Preble Oil Company. Once again for heating fuel. And fifteen thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-five cents goes to CV Mahar engineers and that's for the Brownfields.
Very good. Any council comment on the order? Down to the public? Back to the council. Council Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council to May?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Council Pelletier?
Aye.
Chair Madora's eye, it's unanimous. I know that Council Higgins has been working all week, so if the council doesn't mind, I will take care of order thirty-eight uh, dash twenty-two-four, order thirty-eight dash twenty-two-four, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Is ordered the wastewater warrant for March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four and the amount of two thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Council of Door, second by Council of May. Uh, we have absolutely no big hit. Big over a thousand dollars. Council comment on it? Thank you very much. Any council comment on the order? Down to the public, back to the council, all in favor, Council Higgins?
Aye.
Council Mackin? Council to May?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Council Pelletier? Chair Madora, aye, it's unanimous. Council Mackin, can I please get you to read order thirty-nine dash twenty-two-four? Have us all of us.
Providing for approval for an application for malt venus and spirituous liquor license for American Legion Post eighty. It is ordered that the Milonock Town Council enters into a public hearing for the attached application for a malt venus and spirituous liquor license is hereby approved for Lester Raymond Junior. Business address nine seventy Central Street, Milonock. Doing business as Donald V. Henry Legion Post eighty, nine seventy Central Street in Milonock.
Second.
Second.
Any council comment on the order? Council to May?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I enthusiastically endorse this order. Thank you, Council Mackin. And uh, I hope the rest of the council does as well.
Thank you. Any other council comment? Down to the public? Oh, sorry, Council Danforth, do you have anything?
Um, only that the clerk just um, mentioned that we need to redact the public hearing. So do we need an amendment or?
I would request to um, yes, amend and also when you read quarter number forty-one.
Will you, through the honors, Council?
Yep, I will make an amendment to order number thirty-nine dash twenty-two-four and where it says we need to enter into public hearing that we um, It's not working. Okay.
Okay, so I have a uh, motion to amend by Council Danforth, second by Council Pelletier. Any discussion on the amendment? From the public? Back to the council, on the amendment to strike, uh, enter into a public hearing, uh, Council Higgins?
Hold on.
So hold. Yeah.
I read the whole thing. Oh, I'm terribly sorry, Council McGowan.
It's okay. It just to strike enters into a public hearing, that sentence makes no sense. To read it without that. It is ordered that the Milonock Town Council so what should it say? Approves the attached application.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes. It is ordered that the Milonock Town Council approves the attached application for
Okay.
Let's reword that. Thank you. Let's vote on that.
So just the clarification, the order should read, uh, it is ordered the Milonock Town Council approves.
The attached application.
The attached application for a malt venus and spiritual liquor license. Okay? All right. So, again, any, any uh, discussion by the council? By the public? Back to the council, Council Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Mackin? Council to May?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Council Pelletier?
Aye.
But, Council Madora, Chair Madora, aye. I was gonna say Council Madora. Now, on the order as amended. Order thirty-nine dash twenty-two-four as amended, uh, any council discussion? Council to May, you're all on here.
Still, as amended. I encourage the rest of the council to do as well.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Public, back to the council. Sir Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council to May?
Aye.
Chair Madora, aye. Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Council Pelletier?
Aye.
Thank you for that wonderful bookkeeping order. It's unanimous. All right. All righty. Uh, Council Higgins, can I please get you to read order number forty dash twenty-two-three?
President, order number forty, twenty, twenty-four?
Twenty twenty-four, I'm terribly sorry. Yes, we're in a time warp. Thank you for bringing us back to the future.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Order number forty, twenty-two-four, providing for approval of an application for an entertainment license for American Legion Post eighty. It is ordered that the attached application for an entertainment license is hereby approved for Lester Raymond Junior. Business address nine seventy Central Street, Milonock. Doing business as Donald V. Henry, American Legion Post eighty, nine seventy Central Street, Milonock.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, second by Council to May. Any council discussion on the order? Down to the public? Back to the council? Council Higgins? How do you vote?
Aye.
Council Mackin? Council to May? Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Council Pelletier?
Aye.
Chair Madora, aye, it's unanimous. Oh, my goodness gracious. Oh, it's, it's, it's spreading. Council McGowan, can I please get you to read order forty-one dash twenty-two-four?
Yes. Order number forty-one dash twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four. Providing for approval for an application for a malt venus and spirituous liquor license for Boreal Theater. It is ordered that the Milonock Town Council approves the attached application for a malt venus, spirituous liquor license is hereby approved for Randy D. Jackson, business address two sixteen Penobscot Avenue, Milonock. Doing business as the Boreal Theater, two sixteen Penobscot Avenue, Milonock.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion made by Council McGowan, second by Council Danforth, council discussion on the order. Down to the public? Back to the council, all those in favor, Council Higgins?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council to May?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Council Pelletier?
Aye.
Chair Madora's eye, it's unanimous. All right. Council Pelletier, can I please have you read order forty-two dash twenty-two-four?
Certainly. Order forty-two dash twenty-two-four, providing for approval of an application for an entertainment license for Boreal Theater. It is ordered that the attached application for an entertainment license is hereby approved for Randy Jackson, business address two fifteen Penobscot Avenue, Milonock. Doing business as Boreal Theater, two sixteen Penobscot Avenue, Milonock.
There, second?
Second.
Motion made by Council Pelletier, second by Council McGowan, any council discussion on the order? Down to the public? Back to the council, all those, oh, Council Higgins, how you vote?
Aye.
Council Mackin? Council to May?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Council Pelletier?
Aye.
Chair Madora's eye, it's unanimous. All righty. Council to May, can I please get you to read order forty-three dash twenty-two-four?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number forty-three dash twenty-two-four, providing for approval of the application for a victual license for Mainly Coffee. It is ordered that the attached application for a victor's license is hereby approved. Roger Busby, forty-seven Catatton Avenue, Milonock. Doing business as Mainly Coffee, Mobile Coffee Trailer, Milonock.
Second.
Motion made by Council to May, second by Council McGowan, any council discussion? Council Pelletier?
I noticed there's some outstanding uh, personal property taxes on this one.
You're absolutely right, there is. Certainly, if you would, ma'am clerk.
Um, I have spoken with the uh, honors of the establishment and they are aware and their intention is to take care of it this week.
Okay, so we've had contact with them and they are, they are ready. Okay. Uh, any other council comment on the order? Down to the public? Back to the council, all those in favor of order forty-three dash twenty-two-four, Council Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Mackin? Council to May?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Council Pelletier?
Aye.
Chair Madora's eye, it's unanimous. All righty, uh, Council Danforth, could you please read order forty-four dash twenty-two-four?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, order number forty-four dash twenty-two-four, providing for approval of an application for a victual license for Salt and Cedar Kitchen. It is ordered that the attached application for a victual license is hereby approved for Jeremy Drews, one or two Main Street Carmel, doing business as Salt and Cedar Kitchen Mobile Food Truck. Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, second by Council McGowan, any council discussion on the order? I see none. Down to the public? Back to the council? Break it up a little bit. Council McGowan? How do you vote?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council to May? Council Mackin? Council Pelletier?
Aye.
Council Higgins?
Aye.
Chair Madora's eye, it's unanimous. All right, now the fun one. Council McGowan, can I please get you to read order number forty-five dash twenty-two-four?
I knew you were gonna pick me for this one. Sure. Order number forty-five dash twenty-two-four, providing for amendment of inter-creditor agreement terms. Whereas Arkataden is a main nonprofit corporation organized to foster economic development in the Cataden region. And whereas Arkataden owns the former Great Northern Paper Company mill site in Milonock. And whereas the town has loaned Arkataden four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to assist in redevelopment of the mill site. And whereas Arkataden has additional funding through loan and grant agreements with the Economic Development Agency of the United States Department of Commerce, the Maine Rural Development Authority, Maine Technology Institute and Bangor Savings Bank. And whereas the parties providing funding to Arkataden for redevelopment of the mill site have entered into an inter-creditor agreement. And whereas the inter-creditor agreement requires the written consent of its parties to amendments, modifications, or changes to its terms. And whereas Arkataden has requested modifications editor agree. Six dash twenty-two, twenty nineteen, provides that the town with the approval of the chairman and advice of the town attorney is authorized to modify the terms and conditions, security and priority of security of its loan to Arkataden after consultation with the council. And whereas order number two-two-nine dash twenty-twenty authorized the inter-creditor agreement. And whereas the town manager, with the advice of the town attorney and approval of the chairman, expects to consent to the requested modifications of the inter-creditor agreement. Now therefore, it is ordered that this order documents that the town manager has consulted with the council concerning the requested modifications to the inter-creditor agreement. Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, second, Council McGowan, second by Council Danforth. Uh, any council discussion on the order? Seeing none from the public? Back to the council? Council Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Mackin? Council to May?
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Council Pelletier?
Aye.
Council, Chair Madora is aye, it's unanimous. Council Danforth, can I please get you to read order number forty-seven dash twenty-two-four?
Yes, order number forty-seven dash twenty-two-four, providing for approval of appointment to the planning board alternate. It is ordered that the Milonock Town Council approves the appointment of Evan Campbell to the planning board for the remainder of the five-year term to expire January twenty-twenty-seven. Note, the application was received three thirteen twenty-twenty-four and is the only application on file. Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, second by Council McGowan, council discussion on the order? I, for one, would like to thank Evan uh, for stepping up and volunteering to be on the planning board. That should give us uh, a pretty, with the people who have come That should give us a pretty, with the people who have come as of late. And volunteered for the planning board, that should give us a pretty strong planning board moving forward. Uh, because I know with things coming with Millinocket and. The mill site with our Catatton, there's going to be a lot for the planning board to do, and I feel very confident with the people that we've that have volunteered. That are going to do a great job for the planning board moving forward. What else? Counsel, anyone from the public? Back to the council? Council Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Macken. Council to make.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
Council Pelletier.
Aye.
Chair Midora's eye it's unanimous. Reports and communications, warrant committee for March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four council meeting will be Counselor Macken and Counselor Midor. Here Midor, you all set for that? Okay. Uh, Chair Committee reports, Council Danforth, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have an age-friendly Millinocket Committee meeting earlier this week. There's just a couple of things that I will mention. Um, at this time, planning has started again for the farmers and artisan market. Uh, that will happen. Um, we will have a later start date, probably not June, but first of July. Stay stay tuned for more information on that, but that is in the works. And, um, stay tuned. Also, I'm gonna be working with Chief Cody. We have, um, an initiative to get some of these fall for life cards out to community members. Um, we're gonna work on a distribution project, um, to make sure we get them in the into the hands of folks. So it's how it gives, um, medical information. It can be, there's a. As a magnet, so it attaches to your refrigerator. So when they come to your house and they need some, um, information on your medical history, it's there. So, um, we have about a hundred coming to us, um, at this time, um, free that are given to us through the age-friendly, um. Our, our, um, collaboration with the University Main Center on Aging, um, and we may look to buy more so we can get lots out there. Stay tuned as I work with, uh, Chief Cody. You'll hear more about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any committee reports? Seeing none, so now it's time to move to our two-minute public comment. Uh, again, we stress, please do not direct your comments to any one particular, uh, counselor, but address this as a board. And you have two minutes to go ahead and ask questions or make comments to the council for consideration. So if anybody from the public wishes to do a two-minute comment? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Council to make, second by Council McGowan. Council discussion, I see none. Council Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Macken.
Aye.
Council to make.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
Council Pelletier.
Aye.
Uh, Chair Midor, aye, it's unanimous. Thank you all very much. Thank you.